Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the 1,188th Public Hearing and Regular Meeting of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all persons in our audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the City Council, and the City Council, after holding their own public hearing, will make the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. The Planning Commission holds the only public hearing on request for preliminary plat's and/or vacating petitions. The City Commission's recommendation will be forwarded to City Council for the final determination as to whether a petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition requesting waiver of use or a site plan is denied tonight, the petitioner will have ten days in which to appeal the decision in writing to City Council. Resolutions adopted by the City Planning Commission will become effective seven days after the date of adoption. The Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. Staff has furnished the Commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the Commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of proceedings tonight. If our secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mrs. Smiley.
Present.
Mrs. McHugh.
Present.
Mr. Bonjero.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. Ventura.
Here.
Karen Magna is here. Chairman Wilshow.
Is here, thank you. Also with us tonight we have Mark Tormina and Stephanie Reese from our planning departments. And for folks in our audience, just to understand the format of the meeting, each of the items that are on our agenda tonight, which there's only a couple, we'll have those first called by our secretary, who will give the details of that agenda item. We'll then go to our planning staff, who will give background information on the item. We'll ask that the petitioner come forward and speak to the item. We'll probably have some questions for them. And then we'll have an opportunity for anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on the petition to also come forward. So we'll prompt you along through that process and make sure everybody has an opportunity to let us know what they think. And then after all those comments have been received, we will make our decision. So with that, we will start with item number one on the public hearing section of our agenda.
Petition 2022-04-03-01, submitted by Stonefield Engineering and Design on behalf of Hagerty Residential LLC pursuant to Section 12.08 of the Livonia Code of Ordinances as amended to determine whether or not to vacate portions of an existing sanitary sewer easement at 19750 Hagerty Road located on the east side of Hagerty Road between Seven Mile and Eight Mile Roads in the southwest quarter of Section 6.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Tormina.
Thank you very briefly. This is a request to vacate an existing sanitary sewer easement. It is located at the Hagerty Center Development on Hagerty Road just south of Eight Mile. This sanitary sewer runs along the southern portion of the property. With the development of the new complex apartments and retail center at this location, a new sanitary sewer was constructed, a new easement created. The sanitary sewer that previously existed no longer exists in this easement, therefore the easement can be vacated. And we received two items of correspondence, one from our treasurer, Linda Scheel, the other from our chief accountant, Connie Campula, indicating that they have no objections as there are no general or water and sewer dues payable nor taxes. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tormina. Is there any questions for our planning staff? We don't have a petitioner on this one, do we, Mark?
We actually have the design engineer who can...
Oh, excellent.
...offer any additional information.
Excellent. Good evening, sir. We'll just ask that you start with your name and address.
Absolutely. Mitchell Harvey, Stonefield Engineering, 607 Shelby Street, Detroit, Michigan. And as Mr. Tormina said, we're just requesting to vacate this portion of the easement to align with the actual constructed sanitary sewer, so it is more aligned with the new sewer. That's it.
Well, we thank you for coming tonight. Let's see if there's any questions from any of our commissioners regarding this petition. I don't see any questions from anybody. This is a public hearing, so there is an opportunity for anyone in the audience who wishes to speak for or against this item to come forward. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this item? I can imagine it's not a terribly controversial subject, but we wanted to give that opportunity. If there's any other questions or comments from any of our commissioners, we'll give one last shot. If not, a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bonjero.
I'd like to make an approving resolution.
Okay.
That the request to vacate portions of an existing sanitary sewer easement at 19750 Hagerty Road is hereby approved for the following reasons. One, that this part of the sanitary sewer easement is no longer needed for utility purposes. Two, the vacation of the easement will allow for a new easement to be repositioned in its place encompass the construction of a new sanitary sewer. Three, the vacating will allow the Hagerty Square Development to be completed as approved. And, four, no reporting City Department or public utility has objected to the proposed vacating.
Great, thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Is there support?
Support.
By Mr. Ventura. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, we'll ask for a roll call on the motion to approve.
Mr. Bonjero.
Aye.
Mr. Ventura.
Aye.
Mrs. Smiley.
Aye.
Mrs. McHugh.
Aye.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Karen Magna votes aye. Chairman Wilshow.
Votes aye. Motion passes. We'll go to City Council. Thank you for coming this evening, sir. And that takes care of the public hearing section of our agenda. Now we move on to the miscellaneous section of our agenda, item number two.
Petition 2022-04-08-02, submitted by Middlebelt Plymouth Venture LLC requesting approval pursuant to Sections 3.08, 6.04, and 6.18 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance as amended to construct an apartment complex called Wonderland Flats consisting of two buildings and 201 units on the properties at 29707 and 30273 Plymouth Road located on the south side of Plymouth Road between Middlebelt Road and Milburn Avenue in the northeast quarter of Section 35.
Thank you again, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Tormina.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is a request to construct an apartment complex called Wonderland Flats. The site consists of 10.86 acres of vacant land at Wonderland Village. The site is between the Walmart and the LA Fitness, which is on the south side of Plymouth Road. The property is currently under consideration to be rezoned from C2 General Business to NM2 Neighborhood Multi-Family. Council gave first reading to the rezoning on March 23rd. Apartments up to four stories in height are treated as a permitted use within the NM2 District. The proposed site plan shows two apartment buildings. Both are three stories in height and have similar ground floor areas as well as usable floor areas of 33,500 square feet and 100,000 square feet respectively. The north building is referred to as Building A, and the south building is Building B. Building A would contain 101 and two-bedroom units, and Building B has 101 one- and two-bedroom units for a total of 201 apartments. This represents an overall density of 18.5 dwelling units per acre. The usable floor area of both buildings combined is about 160,000 square feet, and this equals roughly 33.8% of the total site area. All yard, bulk, height, and area requirements of the NM2 District would be met. The buildings are C-shaped and would mirror one another, creating a 1.6-acre central courtyard and common area that would include an in-ground swimming pool and poolhouse. Both buildings would have central lobbies containing a mailroom and elevators. Building A's lobby is larger and also includes a lounge, gym, restrooms, and leasing and manager's office. Additional entrances and exits with staircases are shown at the east and west ends of both buildings. Additionally, each floor would include storage rooms, and each floor would have a mix of both one- and two-bedroom apartments. Altogether, the proposed number of one-bedroom units is 78, which is about 39% of the total number of units, and the number of two-bedroom units is 123, which represents 61% of the overall number of units. Typical two-bedroom unit measures 825 square feet, whereas the one-bedroom unit is roughly 575 square feet. In terms of the architecture, the exterior building materials mostly include a combination of brick and vinyl siding. The elevations of the first floor and portions of the second floor show a brick veneer, while the remaining parts of the second floor and all of the third floor show four different colors and two different styles of vinyl siding. A mix of full balconies and Juliet-style balconies are shown on only a portion of the units facing the exterior of the complex. The building heights would be 36 and 1/2 feet, measured from the finished grade to the top edge of the highest point on the parapet wall. And the roof deck is roughly 2 and 1/2 to 4 and 1/2 feet below the top of the parapets. This is to help conceal the rooftop units. The edge of the roof would contain a prefinished metal coping, and the poolhouse and the maintenance garage would be constructed of similar materials. Here's the elevation view showing those structures. Extending across the rear of the property is a landscape berm and screen wall. To improve the visual barrier between the apartments and the single-family homes to the south, the berm would be widened, and two more rows of evergreen trees, as well as an eight-foot-high obscuring fence would be added. The distance between the wall and the closest apartment building would be about 300 feet, and from the base of the berm to the edge of the parking lot of the apartment complex, the distance is roughly 100 feet. This area would be maintained as a grassy open space. Access to the site would be from two driveways, both of which are at the north end of the apartment complex. These driveways interconnect with internal roads that run both north and east across the Wonderland Village, interconnecting with the other retail establishments and to the signalized intersections at Plymouth and Middlebelt Roads. For parking, the ordinance requires two spaces per apartment for a total of 402 parking spaces. The site plan shows 404 available parking spaces. Car ports are provided for 102 cars and are shown along the east and the south sides of the complex. A total of four dumpsters would serve the apartment complex. Two are on the east and west sides of the parking lots between the buildings, and the other two are in the southeast and the southwest corners of the parking lot. The walls surrounding the containers would be six feet in height and would be constructed out of masonry to match the buildings. For site lighting, the exterior lighting for the parking lots would consist of ground-mounted LED light fixtures that would be at a height of 20 feet. Minimal lighting is shown in the courtyard. There are shown our seven fixtures altogether. For stormwater management, all stormwater would be directed to the existing storm system and to an off-site detention pond, which is in the southwest corner of the development. There are several pedestrian connections shown on the plan. There's a network of internal sidewalks that would connect to a new walkway that would extend across the north end of the property, and then this sidewalk would be extended further east, this is the one shown in yellow, and would then tie into the other sidewalks that link with the various retail buildings, including the Walmart, Target, as well as the sidewalks along both Plymouth and Middlebelt Roads. Fencing would be installed around the perimeter of the complex. The plans show a proposed six-foot screening fence on the west and the east sides of the development, and on top of the berm that runs along the southern boundary, the plan shows a proposed eight-foot screening fence. And along the front, the plans show a more decorative, prefinished aluminum fence with two-by-two-foot masonry columns. This rendering illustrates that fence that runs along the front of the complex. And then also shown would be the... Both driveways leading into and out of the complex would be gated and allow for full movement, and that's what's shown here. So you can see, this is probably the westerly, or maybe the easterly entrance into the development, and you can show the gated entrance way. Terms of signage, multifamily developments are permitted wall sign, one wall sign totaling 20 square feet, and one ground sign totaling 20 square feet, having a maximum height of five feet. These plans show that the main identification sign on the building would be roughly 57 square feet, and the ground sign 40 square feet. So both of these signs are currently oversized for the... Based on what the ordinance recommends, it would have to be approved by the zoning board of appeals. And Mr. Chairman, that is the end of my initial comments, and with that, I can read out the correspondence. We have several items to go through.
Yes, please, please.
We'll start with the engineering division, who presented a letter on May 5th that reads, "In accordance with your request, the engineering division has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no objections to the proposed project at this time. The parcels are assigned the addresses of 29707 and 30273 Plymouth Road. The legal description submitted by the owner for the proposed project appears to be correct and should be used to describe the parcel. If approved, although he... The owner will need to split and combine the properties to be able to develop the lot as shown. The proposed development is currently serviced by Watermain Sanitary and Storm Sewers, which may need to be extended to service the new development. The submitted drawings do not indicate any utility connections or calculations, so we do not have any knowledge of impacts to the existing systems at this time. The existing site has a mix of public and private utilities, which may require additional easements or relocations to provide sanitary and water service to the new parcel. It should be noted that, should the project move forward, the proposed construction will be required to meet the Wayne County Stormwater Ordinance, including revised detention requirements. A full review of the proposed development will be completed when plans are submitted for permitting." Now, a letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next is a letter from the Department of Public Safety, Livonia Fire and Rescue, dated May 17th, that reads, "We have no objections to this proposal with the following stipulations. Subject buildings are to be provided with an automatic sprinkler system. Fire alarm system and onsite hydrants shall be located between 50 feet and 100 feet from the fire department connection. Hydrant spacing shall be consistent with City of Livonia ordinances. A fire access road shall be provided with not less than 20 feet of unobstructed width and have a minimum of 13 feet 6 inches of vertical clearance in accordance with 1823411 and 1823412 of the NFP Code Number 1 of 2015. And four, Knox box installation is required for fire department access through the gate and the buildings. A further detailed plan review will take place when this division receives an official plan set." And that letter is signed by Brian Kuckla, Fire Marshal. Next, we have a letter coming from the Department of Public Safety Division of Police dated May 4th that reads, "I have reviewed the plans in connection with the petition. Concerning is the large volume of residents mixed in a busy commercial area. I foresee many of the residents wishing to walk to the Walmart and Target locations. I do not see any sidewalks or other traffic control measures. Without any, I am concerned with the safety of the residents' pedestrian traffic. Please feel free to contact me should you have any questions." And this is Scott Chapanski, Sergeant of the City's Traffic Bureau. Next, we have a letter of no objection coming from the Inspection Department dated June 3rd and signed by Jerome Hanna, Director of Inspection. Another letter of no objection from our Department of Finance dated May 3rd and signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant. Third letter of no objection dated May 3rd from the Office of the Treasurer, signed by Linda Scheel, Treasurer of the City of Livonia. Next, we have two correspondence, two email correspondence from residents. The first is from Frank Lupa dated Tuesday, June 7th, that reads, "Honorary planning commissioners, I am not sure why there is another petition number for this project. Also, I don't understand why we as residents on Orange Lawn did not receive notice of this meeting in the mail as we have in the past. I would like to inform you that all of our objections that were raised under petition number 2020-816 are the same and continue over to this petition. In the past, the Showstack organization has stated that they have met with the residents in the area regarding this project. I'm not sure who they have talked to as the neighbors. I have asked, were not contacted. Usually with a project with objections like we have, the developer would talk to the residents. Another concern I have regarding the project is the sewer system. Has a study been done regarding whether or not the system can handle this type of project? If it has been done, where can a copy be obtained? If it hasn't been done, will it be done?" Frank Lupa, 29864 Orange Lawn. And then lastly, we have another email correspondence. This comes from Crystal Iverson, also dated Tuesday, June 7th, and it reads, "I wanted to express my continued concern about the change of zoning and the proposed apartment buildings being requested to be built directly behind my house. I would ask that, at tonight's meeting, my concern and objection to both related petitions be raised and voiced. My fiancee and I are a young couple, both with professional jobs. Given the current changing work environment, we are both lucky enough to work from home. While this has been a blessing for our family, the potential for significant construction right behind my house is of large concern to me. My office window directly faces the proposed work site. Not only am I still concerned about my quality of life, personal and family safety, housing values of the neighborhood, power, and sewer stability, increased crime and disruption, et cetera, I am now additionally concerned that construction so near my home, office, will directly impact my household's ability to work without extensive interruption, something that I should be afforded without question when working inside of my home. I would guess that others in the neighborhood have also transitioned to a work-from-home model and are likely impacted as well. For example, at least one of my direct neighbors, whose backyard is also directly in line of the proposed construction, is also in this position. Thank you for your consideration." Again, this is from Crystal Leah Iverson, who gives her address as 29880 Orange Lawn Street. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Tormina. Any questions for our planning staff? I don't see any questions from any of the commissioners for our planning staff, so thank you, Mr. Tormina. Our petitioner is here this evening, and his representatives. If you would like to come forward, and we'll get started with you for this petition, we'll give you an opportunity to give us some additional background information. Good evening, Mr. Showstack.
Good evening, everyone. Jeff Showstack, 17-800 Laurel Park Place Drive, Livonia. It's nice to see you all again. We've made a lot of improvements since our last meeting here, as I won't go into all the details. We have some experts that will kind of walk through it a little more, and obviously Mark Tormina did a great job of kind of highlighting a lot of things that we've changed since our last meeting. But just to kind of highlight a few things on the overall project, just hearing some of the emails come through is, you know, this is a $30 million investment of all brand-new economic development in southeast Livonia. This is a three-story, low-rise apartment project. This is high-end. This is Class A apartments. These are rents that range from $1,200 to $1,700 a month. These are people with good jobs, that'll be good neighbors in the area. I know it was talked about with... One of the residents apparently did not get the memo, but we did meet with the residents, and one of the big things that came out of the meeting that we had with the residents was privacy. And, you know, Mark just highlighted that on our most recent renderings here, but we added two more rows of evergreen trees, plus the fence, and there is no sightline at all from the third-floor apartments into the homes. It cannot be seen. So that was something that came out of meeting with the residents, and we appreciated that feedback because they were frankly right about that, so we're glad we did that. And then just with us today, there's been some questions over this whole process from the operations perspective. So we have Justin Dunkle, who's the President of Paragon Management, who manages our apartments, as well as many other apartments in town. We also have Mike Libidi from Fishbeck, who conducted the traffic study that we sent over last week. So Mike is here. If there's any questions on the traffic study, he can answer that. And then we also have our architect, Mark Shovers, who will walk through some of the additional changes we made. So of course, we're here to answer any more questions you have, but with that, I'm going to hand it over to Justin Dunkle from Paragon to just go over some of the operational questions that have come up.
Thank you, Mr. Showstack. Good evening, Mr. Dunkle.
Good evening, Justin Dunkle. I'm the President of Paragon Properties Company, 32400 Telegraph Road in Bingham Farms. We are an owner and manager of just over 4,000 units in the metropolitan region. In the whole scheme of things, probably a smaller property management shop. We own about 90% of what we manage. We do understand, you know, what it's like to be an owner of multifamily. I do have a very small client list of third-party contracts with, you know, I'm going to tell you, I've been doing this for a long time. The people that I do business with that do not have apartments that I own, they're good, honest people. I've always made a point of doing business with really good people. Happy to be here and talk shop with you. There's not a lot of people in my life that want to talk about property management, so I definitely could talk with you about it all night. I thought maybe I'd kind of just start with the kind of 10,000-foot level, just the state of the apartment business right now, and maybe get down a little bit more granular. There are some recurring questions that I think that have been asked of the petitioner as they relate to property management. So just to reiterate, we, you know, we are a locally owned and managed property management firm. I do manage another apartment community for the petitioner. I have about 125 employees. They are all employees of our company. We manage apartment communities anywhere from 200 units up to 900 units. 90% of my staff are field people, so they are salespeople, they are management personnel, and they are maintenance personnel. All of our developments, as would be the case with this development, they have an onsite management team. And I do know that that's a question that's been asked, you know, will there be eyes on this? Absolutely, I believe. You know, it was talked about, there's going to be a leasing and management office there. That will be open six to seven days a week. There will be an onsite manager, there'll be a salesperson. There will be a maintenance crew here, probably a groundskeeping or porter-type crew that works at the property. Typically, either the manager or the maintenance supervisor will reside at the property. I can't think of one of my existing properties where one of the two does not exist. So there is always a representative of the company at the property 24 hours a day. The state of the apartment industry as a whole, as I'm sure you see, the housing market is just... is crazy right now. And I'm sure you've heard the same thing. We have, in this country, in the state, and in the metro, there is a huge lack of housing out there right now. To put it in perspective for you, again, I manage 4,000 apartments as of yesterday. I check all my stats, right? Monday starts the week, as of yesterday, I had four apartments available in a 4,000-unit portfolio. The demand is there. I'm a little bit older than you probably think, but I'm also fortunate enough that I've seen several economic cycles. I saw the economic cycle in the early to mid-'90s. I saw the, you know, the growth of the apartment business, of the housing business, of the economy. I also, you know, survived through the downturn of 2008 and what came along with that, through all those periods. And I've been with Paragon Properties for going on 18 years. And the 10 years prior to that, I worked with, for a very large property management company. This is what I do. This is how I feed my family in this business. The business, you know, I think there've been, you know, some discussion just about where the rents are. As Mr. Showstack mentioned to you, this is a Class A apartment community, rents $1,200 to $1,600. In my world, those are not exorbitant rents. You know, to put it into perspective for you, we use a ratio typically, a rent-to-income ratio around a third, you know, 30 to 35% of the annual income. You're really looking at people, you know, household incomes in the $60,000 to $80,000 range. So I definitely think, you know, it's affordable, particularly in a city like Livonia. Going, you know, one of the other items that has been brought to my attention is some concerns about just our rules and regulations and the occupancy of the apartments. There tends to be a concern, you know, that multi-generational families will live there, that there's just going to be too many people. I will tell you that not only do we have strict lease agreements and rules and regulations, the rule of thumb in the apartment business typically, traditionally for most professional landlords, is two occupants per bedroom. One-bedroom apartment, two people; two-bedroom apartment, max of four people. And we do follow that same standard. I will tell you that HUD sees things a little bit differently. You know, I take a fair housing class every year, and I know the HUD regulations pretty well. Every once in a while, there will be a municipality that will have rules a little bit different that will not only go by the bedroom size, but they will also go by the square footage size. So I do have some apartments that are, you know, two-bedrooms that are 1,200, 1,300 square feet, that HUD tells me that we have to allow five people in. I will tell you, just on my knowledge of the HUD rules and regulations and the size of the apartments that have been presented here and proposed here, this will follow the two-per-one-bedroom and the four-per-two-bedroom rule. Besides the onsite management and our consistency in, you know, holding those standards, we do, in all the municipalities, and it will be the same as Livonia, we are subject to a rental inspection from the city. So that's a good gut check, right, to keep things going. We have lender inspections, we have insurance inspections. We are pretty regulated. And candidly, you know, just from an asset preservation standpoint, it's not in our best interest. The more people and the smaller the space, the bigger the damage, the bigger the opportunity for problems. So that is a very, very predictable methodology in our business. I'll talk to you a little bit, too, just about our approval standards and our screening standards. They are very stringent. You know, we, again, in the apartment business, income, housing reference, credit, those are the traditional things. We do something, we go a little bit about... We do something, we go a little bit above and beyond that. And we, so we've actually subscribed to a service that is called ID Verify, where we actually verify identities. Believe it or not, over the last two to three years, ID fraud has become a real problem in a lot of businesses. So, that has been a very good service that we use to, you know, verify identities of who is living in these apartments. I will assure you that every week I see people that are getting kicked out of the application pool because they have fraudulent apps. The other thing we use is a service called Snapped, with two Ps, and that is an income verification tool. It's very easy these days to do a Google search and go out there and try to figure out how to get a fake pay stub, and you'll be able to do so in about thirty seconds. So this, it actually uses artificial intelligence technology. It's always evolving. It can spot the fraudulent pay stubs, bank statements, just through watermarks and through, you know, different lines and cuts on that. So that has been a wonderful, you know, service that we've been using, just to keep things honest and to keep things clean and have the people that deserve to live at these apartments live at these apartments. So, the other thing that I know has come up, too, has just been the overall security of the apartment community. I'm thrilled, and I've actually, that, you know, in the petition, I think there's information in there about the state-of-the-art security cameras that are going to be installed at this development. So besides having a gated entry system, you know, for ingress and egress to the apartment community, this community will be outfitted with state-of-the-art security cameras, exterior cameras, door cameras. There are actually license plate readers on these cameras. I've recently, in the last couple of years, I've retrofitted some of our older apartment communities with these security cameras. And I will tell you that they're absolutely amazing, the video quality. They have, I can get real technical with you here, they have facial recognition technology. So, you know, in the event that the police have someone that they're looking for, or there's a problem, and they have a photo, you can put it into this video, this facial recognition technology. It can literally, it can track them throughout a development, it can trap them from development to development. It's pretty slick. That being said, at almost all of my apartment communities, and I believe the same would be here for Wonderland Flats, is we still use an after-hours security patrol. So when the office staff heads home at, you know, six, seven o'clock, we will typically still have a security service on the property. They do rotating patrols. They definitely, we give the residents their phone numbers. Our residents will call them from anything, anything from, you know, getting an escort from their car to their apartment. They'll help them carry in groceries. But it's just nice to have a presence. They actually do lockouts. Sometimes they can do lockouts if people get locked out of their apartments. So, that's been a very good thing, you know, to have at the various apartment communities, and I think would definitely, you know, serve this development very well. Let's see here. The other thing I wanted to touch on, too, and actually was suggested, I guess, in the presentation, is there, you know, and I've definitely heard this question before regarding apartment developments, is this trash, right? You know, dumpsters and stuff like that. Really, there is a formula, right? If I go to any one of the carriers and I say, I have this many apartments, they're this size, you know, how many dumpsters do I need? There's a formula there that says you need six to eight dumpsters, they need to go here, here, and here, and this is what the frequency is. It's not an exact science. It's really something that, you know, we have to look at, because we're there every day, from an operations standpoint, and just understand, you know, the frequency. It does not behoove us, though, as owners and operators of apartments, to have trash strewn all over the place. These are renters by choice. At this rent level, these are renters by choice. They definitely have high standards, as do we. So I don't, I do not want to downplay the significance of that concern, but definitely, I mean, I, again, I can always look, and I can tweak number of containers, I can tweak the frequency of pickups, just to make sure that is addressed. So, again, I could definitely talk property management with you all night, but I'd love to answer any questions you may have. Anything else specific?
I think you've given a wonderful presentation, Mr. Dunkel, of both the state of the industry and then this, addressing some of the concerns about this site, so I appreciate that. Let me first go to our commissioners and see if there's any questions for either you or any of the other representatives from this project, and then we'll get the appropriate people up to answer those questions. Ms. Smiley?
Yeah, good evening. Do you manage any properties in Livonia?
We do not manage any properties in Livonia. About ten years ago, and I'm failing on the name of it, we did manage a property in Livonia. I do have two apartment communities that we own and manage in Westland.
Okay, and do you have any senior complexes, or are they all?
No, they're all traditional, no senior housing. I do have one mobile home park that we manage.
Okay, how about, well, you mentioned HUD. For a five-hundred-and-seventy-five-square-foot apartment, how many people could live in there?
It would be two.
Be two?
It would follow the bedroom rule.
Okay, follows the bedroom rule. So that would be a one-bedroom?
It would be a one-bedroom. When you start getting into large one-bedrooms in eight-hundred-and-fifty and nine-hundred square feet, is when, it's actually, I'm worried to death, there's the HUD guidelines, and then there was a Keating memorandum that was actually run through. It's when they start to do an equation with, you know, number of people relative to square footage, the bedroom sizes.
Okay, and then the five-hundred-and-seventy-five-square-foot, twelve hundred dollars, does that seem about average for rent?
It does. You know, rents have been escalating at an amazing clip over the last few years, but, you know, really, that's about, particularly with new development, you know, new, modern development with state-of-the-art cameras and amenities and finishes, you know, granite finishes and hardware and stuff like that, that's definitely what I'm seeing. In my rents across my portfolio, I have what I would call everywhere from Class A apartments, right, renters by choice, to Class C apartments, which are renters by necessity, you know, and so I'm seeing anywhere from, you know, a dollar thirty, a dollar forty a square foot for the renters by necessity, you know, to, you know, excess of, you know, two dollars a square foot. And I will tell you that the demand is just as strong on the entry level as it is on the, just as strong on the high end of the rent level that it is on the low end.
So this is over two dollars a square foot?
Yeah, yeah. I'm actually seeing stuff in Troy, Washington Township, probably approaching, it's approaching over three dollars a square foot. I feel very, I've got to operate this, right? You know, so the developer's done, and the owner's done, and then it falls, you know, comes to me to operate it. That's where I make my money. That's how my business runs, and I'm very comfortable with the rent pro forma that has been put together here. I've been very realistic about an expense pro forma that has been put together here, which, you know, equate to a net operating income and, you know, create a viable business. Yeah, I'm very comfortable. You'd be surprised, I'm actually getting, I've got two bedrooms in Westland right now that are about fifteen hundred dollars, and they were built in nineteen sixty-nine.
And how big is that apartment?
They're about nine-hundred-and-fifty square feet for a two-bedroom.
Nine-hundred-and-fifty square feet? Our two-bedroom is that eight and a quarter?
Yeah.
Okay, and that's in Westland?
It is.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smiley. Any other questions for this representative? Mr. Bonjero? Oh, Dave, do you want to pull your mic down so our audience can hear you? Thanks.
I think it goes, this one goes back to Mr. Showstack. You had mentioned, you had a meeting with the neighbors. How many neighbors attended that?
There was four or five.
Four or five, okay. What was the feeling they were saying, like, away, or, you know?
I think they, you know, had obviously varying of opinions. Privacy was kind of the big topic, was, you know, we live behind here, and, you know, how is that going to, how is this going to affect that? And that's where we came to the conclusion of adding the layers of trees. And then there was, you know, some overall just different thoughts and ideas. Walkability came up a little bit, which we've improved. That also came up in some of the meetings here, then with council as well. But, I mean, that was the general sense of it. It was arranged by a couple of the councilmen, and, you know, obviously we'd have liked more people to show up, but, you know, that's what we had, and so we tried to respond to what, you know, they told us.
Go ahead, Mr. Bonjero.
I was just saying, that mailer went out to basically everybody in the neighborhood, or, you know what I mean?
Let's not talk from the audience, just so that, right now, we're talking between commissioners and the petitioner. We'll give you all a chance to speak, and you can address those issues.
I'm just trying to get, like, did it go out to everybody? Such a low turnout, did everybody know? You know what I mean? There's, it seems like there's a lot of opposition, so I would expect they would have been there to talk, but maybe some of them didn't want to, you know?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, it clearly appears that people did not get the invite. I don't know specifically how it was sent out. You know, two councilmen set it up and, you know, invited different folks through whatever different groups and ways to get people in Livonia, and, you know, people came that came.
Yeah, I guess I just have, changing it a little bit, the vinyl siding. Mark, is it common that a building like this, in our city, would have vinyl? Do you see much vinyl?
In terms of apartment complexes?
Yeah.
Very rare.
Very rare. I guess I would like, I guess that would be one of my main concerns, is vinyl. I think a more rigid, you know, veneer would be more suitable. I don't know why they picked vinyl. Is there a reason, just for expense, or?
There's a couple of reasons. Mark, would you like to come up and introduce yourself, explain what kind of vinyl?
Mark Schoverz, Spire Design Group, architect, one fifteen East Fourth Street, Rochester, Michigan. The vinyl was picked, I can, so there's, they've come out over the years with different vinyls that have more texture to them, more patterns to them. This isn't just your run-of-the-mill residential siding. So we're getting the board and batten looks, we're getting stained wood looks out of it. The benefits to vinyl over, like, hardy or these other materials are, hardy's great, but you still have to paint it, it still peels. South side of a facade, it's not going to last. You can be up there painting it every five to ten years. This is going to last for thirty years untouched. You can power wash it, you can spray soap on it, you can keep it clean. It's a much longer, more durable product to maintain the colors and the look of the building.
Okay. Yeah, I know, you know, I'm familiar with vinyl, I am for sure. You know, you get the ripples in it when the heat expands it. I just think that, on this size, my opinion, vinyl should not be on that building. It just, to me, it just doesn't seem like it's suitable, but that's my opinion. And I don't know if, you know, if it's not common also with the rest of developments that we're seeing. And I keep looking back at the Hagerty Development, over at Hagerty and Eight Mile, and I was there tonight, and there doesn't appear to be any vinyl on it, and it's, you know, it just seems like it's going to, longevity-wise, I think it's going to hold up better, but that's my opinion, but thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Any other questions for our petitioners, representatives?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ventura.
I'm not sure who the question is for, so I'll just ask it generally. HUD was mentioned in the presentation by Mr. Dunkel. Have you, do you plan to have this project qualify for Section Eight financing and/or occupancy?
No, not Section, Section Eight and HUD are kind of two separate things. This is, I mean, Section Eight, this is nowhere near Section Eight. This is high-end, Class A apartments. We haven't lined up all the financing yet. We'll most likely work with Comerica Bank, who is the lender on the property. But no, this will never in any fashion be a Section Eight apartment complex for what we're building. Could never afford that.
Thank you. Mr. Dunkel mentioned onsite management, and it sounded to me like those would be maintenance people, is that correct?
Maintenance as well as office staff, so there would be salespeople as well as management personnel.
Overnight, however, who's on property?
So overnight, typically, my belief is that there's going to be at least one person from the staff. Typically, it's either a manager or a maintenance person that's living there. We do perform twenty-four-hour emergency maintenance, so there is an efficiency there, simply to have a maintenance person on-site. As far as overnight, that's where we get into the after-hours security patrol.
How do you plan to control access to the site?
Well, so...
Are there, you said it's gated? Are there guards at the gate?
Yes, yeah, so the entry, so the two points of entry will be gated entries. The traditional schedule on the gates at other apartment communities I manage that have them is, they may adjust it seasonally a little bit, right in the summer, but typically gates are down or closed from six P.M. to six A.M., and then they open up while people are going to work, while package deliveries are coming in. Again, we can, you know, we can kind of get an idea and adjust it accordingly.
So there's no controlled or restricted access during the day?
During the day. I can definitely, I can keep it controlled during the day. You know, my experience has been, particularly with the number of delivery drivers, FedEx, UPS, Amazon, that are coming in, that actually creates even more of a backup, trying to use a gated entry system during the day, and then it flows back out into the residential streets.
I'm really concerned about security. So there's no guard personnel at the gate? It's not a...
It's not a manned entry, correct. There will be the license plate readers, the cameras at the gate, and those are all the time.
Tell us a little bit more about ID Verify. I mean, how do we know that somebody's a legal resident of the country or of the state?
So, social security numbers, state IDs, driver's license. I can't necessarily get super granular with you regarding how it works, but it's, you know, I will tell you, it's pretty sophisticated, and I do, I see enough instances, I've seen, particularly in the last couple of years, of fraud. This is stuff I wasn't catching five years ago, so I'm very confident in this service.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dunkel. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any other questions for our petitioner, Mr. Long?
Thank you, Mr. Dunkel, if you could stay there. Thank you very much for your presentation. I thought it was very thorough.
Thank you.
I had a question about going back to the number of residences, residents in an apartment, and, you know, they come in, they sign the lease, you know, you think that you only have two people living there, but there's more in there because you have cameras on them, and you realize that. So then what? What's your process? What happens?
You ask them politely. You call them, you meet with them, you explain the violation, and you try to do it the amicable way. And when that doesn't work, you know, you do serve them with a thirty-day lease violation because they're, you know, they're violating the terms of the lease and overoccupying the apartment.
Okay, and so that's a thirty-day process?
It is a thirty-day process, so, you know, that, a thirty-day, you know, there's a seven-day notice to quit in the housing business that typically has to do with non-payment of rent. Other things would be handled in a thirty-day, so they're expedited. A thirty-day is actually expedited, a little bit more so than a non-rent payment case, so it's going to be violent acts, drugs, lease violations, things like that. It's just a little bit faster process to move through the court system.
Okay, I appreciate the education. The, given your experience and your large portfolio, if you're getting over occupancy, is it happening, and these are upscale, but they're a little bit smaller apartments? Is it more likely to get over occupancy in a smaller apartment or in a larger apartment? Is it more driven by location?
I wish there was a hard and fast rule. I will tell you as a general statement, it is something that I rarely encounter.
Okay.
Our onsite management is pretty diligent, you know, between the camera, they just know what's going on, you know? As you can imagine, you know, the apartment management personnel end up being therapists and counselors and, you know, everything else, so we know these people pretty well. The postal service worker loves to come in and tell you when they're delivering mail to apartments of people that they don't know. The UPS driver, you know, because they like to come in and take our coffee and our candy and our cookies, and so they love to spill the tea on what's going on there. But honestly, Mr. Long, it's really rare, and it doesn't have a specific face, small apartment, large apartment, geographic. I mean, I can tell you some stories, maybe, you know, different, you know, war stories, but yeah, it's really not a thing. It's, the city inspections that we have by the municipalities, they're great. Again, they love to come in and tell us what they see. We're going, you know, I think we actually go into these apartments possibly too much, right? You know, we're doing biannual inspections, we're changing furnace filters, we've had eyes on quite a bit.
Great, I appreciate that, too. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Any other questions for our petitioner? Mr. Caremagna.
I think most of my questions are for Mr. Dunkel. You're very knowledgeable, obviously, in what you do. So a couple of questions about the challenges of this property or other properties that you manage or have managed. What are some of the, what are some of the items that are habitual problems?
Paycheck fraud for applicants and ID fraud. You know, I'm going to, I'm going to have a recency bias here, right? Particularly over the, over the last couple of years. So it has made our screening process much more arduous. But again, I'd rather put in the time there than have the problem after the fact. You know, at any given time, you're going to have, you're going to have some rent collection challenges. It knows no faces well, right? But, you know, whether the rents are $2,000 a month or $700 a month. You can always count on having to chase, you know, some people here and there for rent. So, I don't know, I wish I could give you some more. It's so, it's so routine to me, but.
With, with that being said, how long will you chase money? You're going to let someone go out one month, two months, three months? How far are you going to let them stay?
I will give somebody a flyer on their late fees one time, and we'll file, we file a case on them immediately.
Correct.
So, you know, we, you know, we use some dunning letters and phone calls. We tried to do this the right way the first time around. It's, it's all about, you know, it's all about screening them the right way first time around. Don't let people in that have no business affording the rent. That doesn't do you any favors down the road when you're trying to collect it. But very, very disciplined with our managers when they're sitting down and moving, you know, moving somebody's, moving somebody in. You know, not, not to be callous about the business, but, you know, as a landlord, we have many obligations to our, to our residents. We have many, many obligations to fix the apartment and upkeep and quiet enjoyment. They have one, they have one obligation to us, and that's to pay their rent on time, contractually, as we, as we agreed upon. So, you know, we're a little bit more eloquent when we, we talk about it at lease signing, but.
Okay. And how about, how about when they got to get put out? What do you, you evict them, you, you schedule that eviction? How does that work? Because there's only a couple of elevators in these buildings. So how does that tie up the, the, the process for people coming in?
It does, so, you know, the process is you file a seven-day, you have a court hearing. Actually, in today, in current, in the current environment, in almost all the courts, now a mandatory second hearing. So you, you do not get a judgment at your first court hearing. Since COVID has been upon us, there's been a mandatory second court hearing. I would say probably 80% of the time, the defendant does not show for the court hearing. You're given a default judgment. You then have a waiting period before you can get a writ of restitution signed by the judge. You have to then wait a few days after that writ of restitution. In the meantime, we're in, we're in contact with the local bailiff, with the court systems. I will say, I'm going to say probably 75% of the time, the, the delinquent resident does end up moving out on their own. When, when they start realizing that it, that it's a reality, they do, they do move out on their own, which means that there is, there is not chaos. There is not a problem with the elevators. There is not a problem with, you know, stuff being put on, on the curb. In those rare occasions where somebody does need to be set out, it's all, it's all, it's all hands on deck. It's interesting, you know, it depends on the rules of the municipality. You know, sometimes it's, it's the bailiff and the bailiff's team, they have to do everything. There are other municipalities where the, the maintenance team can also participate and just to help expedite the process.
Okay. Vehicles, vehicles on the site, abandoned vehicles, perhaps vehicles that aren't plated?
Yeah.
What is your, what's your process in other locations?
So that is, that's actually another, another function that our, our security company does, does keep track of. So we, we're, we have an interface with most of them with their, their technology and interfaces with our rent rolls. And also our resident profiles, which means they do know license plates, they do know registrations of vehicles. So unauthorized vehicles, the most obvious ones are the, the flat tires, you know, bad parking jobs. Those are pretty easy to tag. You know, some of them do take a little bit more, you know, the ones that have been sitting there for 20, 30 days and you start, you know, you realize it. You have to dig a little bit deeper on that. But, you know, we, we engage with, with private towing companies in the event that we do have to tow vehicles. So it's just having eyes on stuff all the time.
Well, that's, that's good. For your personal business, what is a term for you to manage a property? So you're coming in, expected to manage Wonderland Flats. For what term? Two years, 10 years?
Okay, I was wondering, are you asking me compensation or duration?
I don't care what term it is. I, I, well, I won't say I don't care about that. But what is your term managing this property? Is it two years, five-year contract? What is it? How, how long-term are you in this deal?
So it's, the management contracts are, the initial management contracts are all one year. They, they auto-renew. To put it in perspective with you, in my, the other property that, that I do manage for the Showstack Group or the petitioner, the management contract's going on 17 years.
Okay. So you have a long-term relationship. Obviously, the, the Showstack Group is comfortable with you and you are apparently comfortable with them as well.
I'm comfortable with them and I hope they would say the same.
Okay. The, the last question, I've got, I've got a couple more, actually. How about kids in this, in this complex? Where will a school bus pick them up at?
That, so that's typically something that we, you know, as the development progresses along, that in once a census of school-age attending children is kind of determined. We end up working typically with the schools. Most of our, and I know for sure, for sure, our two Westland properties, for example, they have a bus stop at the property. They will actually come into the apartment community, they'll have a designated area. Typically, it is by the, it's by the leasing and management office. We will, we will set up some benches for the parents to sit, you know, doing this for the, you know, it's great. I've done this for so many years. The kids get off the bus, they run in the office, they steal all your candy, you know, but it's, it's precious, right? You know, but it's, it's good because the parents feel comfortable, right? Bus, bus pickup time, bus drop-off time, we're there, right? We've got people there, eyes, eyes on, eyes on them.
Okay, and the last question I've got, again, with all your knowledge, you said you, you managed a former Livonia apartment complex, but you don't remember where it is? Or let me ask you this, I'd like you to think about where that is because I'd like to know. And secondly, how come you don't manage it anymore?
So, do you know Mitchell Blaznik?
No.
Anybody? Was it, what property did he own?
They still own it on Plymouth Road?
It was on, it was, yeah, it was on Plymouth Road, and I don't know if he still owns it.
Plymouth Woods.
Yeah? Does that sound right, Plymouth Woods?
I don't know.
Yeah.
I just know it's on Plymouth.
So.
The name Plymouth Woods, what, what does that mean? That doesn't resonate with me. Where's Plymouth Woods at?
It's on Plymouth, it's like, is it between like six and sevens?
It's been doing years. It's within probably five minutes drive from our property on Plymouth.
Well, Plymouth's pretty simple. It goes from Inkster to, to 75.
Give me two minutes and I'll figure out what property it is.
Yeah, I'd like to.
I will, I will answer your question, though, about, about the management. So it was about 10 years ago. And the, the patriarch of the family had, the, the patriarch of the family had reduced his multifamily portfolio to a point where it did not make sense for him to have an in-house management company. He actually had two, two sons in college at that time. And so I actually knew that it was a short-term assignment relatively. I actually managed a property for him in Livonia, I managed a property in Plymouth, two properties in Saginaw. It was like a five-property, a five-property portfolio. And I knew that it was, I was actually going to, when, when his, when his sons graduated from U of M, it was their intention to go into the, to the family business and begin a management company. So as the, when the first one graduated, I actually hired him and, and mentored him and really kind of taught him how to run a property management company. And then his, his younger brother graduated, and they are now back in the management business. They manage their own apartments.
Okay.
So that was how the divorce happened. But it was very, I knew it was coming from the beginning.
Thank you.
And I'm going to figure out the property for you.
Yeah, good.
Okay.
Mr. Caremagna, Plymouth Woods is located on Plymouth, south side of Plymouth Road between Newburgh and Echols, across from McKesson.
Okay, thank you.
Whether that's the property in question, I don't know, but that is where Plymouth Woods is. Is there any other questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Chair, just one quick question.
Mr. Bonjero, of course.
Is this a smoke-free apartment complex?
It will be, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, all, you know, for the most part, we've moved, been moving in that direction for probably about the last five to seven years. You know, the older apartment communities is a little bit harder.
Yeah.
Out of the gate, it's very easy.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions from any of the commissioners? If not, I'm just going to ask a couple of brief questions. I'll start with you, Mr. Dunkel. Hopefully you can answer these. If not, you can, you can punt it to one of your other team.
I will, and I'm looking this up right now. I'm going to have this answer for you.
All right.
Please.
If you can multitask, we can, we can do two things at once here. Is there any discussion about EV charge ports or EV charging, which is of course electrical vehicles?
Yeah.
At the site? Because that, that's kind of where things are going.
It definitely is.
And that's a big problem for apartment complexes.
It is. I've actually retrofitted, again, some of, some of our older apartment communities. We haven't gone terribly in, in depth on the discussion. I think, you know, the question is, is how many? What is appropriate?
Okay.
You know?
And with those, do you know if those would be provided by the complex? Or is that something that then they would have to pay to?
Where I have them currently, I'm not, I'm not charging for them. It's an amenity.
Okay.
Yep.
So you have these at some of your other sites?
Yep.
Okay, something to consider for the developer and the petitioner to think about, because that's really the way of the world, I guess. The other question is regarding the housing values of the surrounding area. This may be a difficult question for you to answer, but, because you do have immense knowledge of rental apartment business, obviously. But in your experience, when you have a development like this, what does it do to the value of housing, housing in the surrounding area?
Well, I mean.
Does it impact it positively, negatively?
I, you know, is it up, you know, an upscale apartment development brings people, people, people spend money. They, they put money in, into the local community, you know? So what, what correlation does that have on values, right? You know, I'm theorizing to you, basically, by the way, right now. You know, but, but, but it creates confidence, consumer, consumer confidence. You know, as, as we know, the, the single-family housing market is pretty reliant upon its, its own set of, of competitors to determine the values. You know, I think we're, we're all very fortunate right now that, you know, values are, have rebounded really well and, and are doing well. I will tell you without, without a question, that it brings a heck of a lot more value than a vacant piece of land. You know, it's, it's definitely, you know, a, a high-income, nice-looking, you know, development. So I, you know, I, I think that it enhance, this is something that will enhance the neighborhood. And my, this is my opinion.
Okay. Your opinion is perfectly fine. We appreciate that. We're going to hear lots of opinions tonight, and so I, always good to know yours as well. Thank you, Mr. Dunkel. If there's no other questions for our petitioners?
Mr. Chair, I've got, I've got another.
Mr. Caremagna, go ahead.
And this is probably not for Mr. Dunkel, this is probably for Jeff and his team. In one of the letters, we heard about the visual and the interruption during construction. If this moves forward, would the fence and the trees go up last? Or will the fence and the trees go up before construction of the building to, to, to provide a buffer zone?
Can I answer, give you Woodridge Apartments?
Woodridge?
On Middlebelt.
Okay.
Yeah, Woodridge. 18242 Middlebelt.
18424?
Eight.
242.
184, I'm sorry, 18242 Middlebelt, Woodridge. It was about 10 years ago.
Thank you.
Middlebelt between Seven and Eight Mile, probably?
Yeah, I thought Six and Seven is between Seven and Eight.
By the Burger King, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
In regards to the fencing as for privacy during construction, we would be willing to do that as soon as possible. There is some utilities under that berm that we have to get to. A water main comes out there that we're going to be tapping off of. So as soon as that work is done there and it, and we're not digging up the berm anymore, we'd be more than willing to put the berm and provide that buffer from as soon as possible.
So if this goes through sooner than later, you'd see that, that visual assistance to keep, keep the neighbors off the, off the construction and all the activity there?
Yeah, from my estimation, that work would happen before we were even going vertical. Because they're going to do all the utility work. So before we're going vertical, that fence would be in.
And the trees also?
And the trees, yes, yes.
Thank you.
So Mr. Caremagna, Woodridge Apartments is on Middlebelt, just by Curtis. So between Six and Seven.
Yeah. Bless you.
So just we have that figured out. Thank you. If there's no other questions from any of our commissioners, one more shot, I will then go to the audience. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this petition is welcome to come forward to either one of our podiums. And we're going to ask that, of course, each resident start with their name and address for our record. And because there probably will be some, or multiple people wishing to speak, I just ask that you try to keep your comments somewhat brief so that we can get everybody an opportunity to speak. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Weldon. I'm at 29912 Orange Lawn. And even though it's June and it's almost summertime, we've had a lot of snow here tonight. Must be a little weather change. On the one hand, the whole purpose of the MN2 change was supposed to be a downtown environment to bring people and families into this area. The Livonia Vision 21. That doesn't fit with what this apartment complex represents. It doesn't have any kind of walkways for people to come here, to be attracted to here. It doesn't provide the intermix of both architecture and retail and then residential's that you might see downtown in Detroit now. So the question is, is why are we putting in a strict apartment complex that doesn't fit with that vision? That's what this panel addressed previously before it was passed on to the city council. And you all voted unanimously, no, the same arguments still exist. The issues of traffic, we're already seeing huge flows of traffic with all the recent development that's going on here. You're going to have Chick-fil-A, you've got a plasma center and some other kinds of things coming on. So you've got, again, all the utilities that have to be addressed, the sewer system. I was checking recently, the flood plain for this area has been pretty good for us. We haven't had any sewer backups into our basements and things like that. With this, when you get 200-plus units with people, and this is from experience, my brother had several apartment complexes. You get some of these people and they violate how they're supposed to put toiletry stuff down the commodes. And they flush it and it backs up. Well, then that starts to pile up and back up the rest of the area. So then all of a sudden, you get these floods, and now we're going to, Livonia's going to have some issues with the residents that have had peaceful conditions with their basements. And all of a sudden, what's going to address that? Is Mr. Showstack and his company going to be responsible for that? Because he's going to have the benefit of all these rentals, and yet we're going to pay the price. So we're going to have more traffic, not only with the traffic we got now, you're going to add 200 units, which each one can have potentially two vehicles. Or with the two bedrooms, you could have more. And then as far as Mr. Paragon, the Paragon personnel was representing, again, from experience, you're going to get people that violate those rules. They don't care. They're going to sublet their apartment. Just to say that these are high-level Class A apartments, look at where this area is. This is not a high draw like over in Laurel Park where you might put something like that. And the high-end people want to live in that area. You've got Walmart, you've got Target, and you've got a bunch of low little stores in here. That's not going to draw the people that want to pay that kind of price. So you're going to get the people that can take advantage, that will say, oh, I'll get two or three roommates. And that's what a lot of them do. And then you get more traffic, they don't care about. And again, it's being gated and there's license plate. They're going to say, oh, this is my guest. This is my girlfriend. You're not going to challenge them. And so if this place doesn't produce with enough rentals, what happens? Well, usually the staffing management company reduces how many people are there to manage the place. Then you get one person that's not going to challenge people. So you've got, again, the question becomes, does this really fit with the Livonia Vision 21? No, it doesn't. As he mentioned with the, Mr. Bonjero had mentioned with the vinyl. Well, vinyl breaks down from the sunlight ultraviolet. That has an impact on it, so then it starts to get faded. So again, what Mr. Showstack has done in the past, and you look at the current berm, that was never built to the specifications that he had promised. It was supposed to be 13 feet tall. It's barely nine and a half. The trees, some of the trees in my, my backyard and then my neighbors, we've got weeds growing up through the tree. I've got one tree literally on a 45-degree angle, not very attractive. If I was wanting to sell my home, that they'll look at that condition and go, what's going on back here? So if he was going to put in this berm and everything else first, then let's make sure that he's going to hold to the specifications that's there. Not do it shortchanged and then no one inspects, and we're stuck with low level and stuff that isn't done right. And that'd be probably the same thing with the vinyl. Again, he just hasn't promised, he's promised a lot of things and then he fails to do. Again, he just hasn't promi- he's promised a lot of things and then he fails to do. I think he, he shortchanges a lot of things. He's brought in stuff and, uh, we've paid the price for it. Um, we had that Jeepers where we had issues with that. Uh, the police, again, that's a point that was brought up. We had violations. Now we're gonna have a really ungated but gated area? You're gonna have school buses trying to pick up kids where there's no real walkway? People trying to get, again, this is not the Vision twenty-one that it's supposed to be. This really needs to go back and say, put in some residential, um, I'm sorry, retail type of businesses. That's what would fit there. Now we're trying to fit in and have to deal with all the potential repercussions. Again, the traffic is gonna be even worse. We don't know about the floodplain. And then God forbid, you get a couple of people that get kicked out, it's been in the news. They get pissed off, they set the apartment on fire. And if you've got a three-story building over here behind with the residents, that catches on fire with the wind drift that we get coming over the berms? Good God, that fire department is not gonna get here in time to cover not only the apartment complex, but all the houses that can catch on fire. That's us dealing with that. And then you guys will also be going, what did we do wrong? So one of the things that you guys mentioned early on is that your staff came up with proposals for pro and con. I'd like to have that published where we can review it and say, what are those details? What is it that you guys considered that was given to you to say, this is a good thing for Livonia Vision? And lastly, the last part I wanna bring up. And I'm sorry, it's one of those things. I'm getting older, so the thought that I had in my mind is, is, is disappeared. If, if I could, I'd like to come back. Uh, you mentioned as well, how big, how many units was that, that he was managing ten years ago? Was it a simple, like, sixteen unit? Who knows? I don't know. Uh, again, looking at his experience, but he put on a good story, but again, the reality is, most of the people that, if they're gonna violate it, they're gonna violate it. So we're gonna deal with that aspect as well. But for now, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weldon. Next we have a, another gentleman on our, on my right. Good evening, sir. How are you?
Oh, it's me. Hi, how you doing?
Good.
Uh, my name's Bill Schmidt. I live at two-nine-six-eight-eight McIntyre. Behind, a couple streets behind the proposed development. I am opposed to the development. And, uh, I'm very curious about the notion that this is gonna be high-end luxury housing. Now, I want you to picture yourself, young striver. Let's say you're an accountant or an attorney or a young doctor. You're a big pro, you're, you've, you're striving in the first part of your life. You're a renter, cause you're a renter by choice. You call up your, your new girlfriend, say, Betsy, hey, Betsy, come on over to my new place. I live in the Walmart parking lot. I live in Walmart parking lot. Matter of fact, it's right by the plasma donation place. That's pretty high-end, huh? You're a striver. Pretty impressive. And you're calling Betsy on the phone, come on over to my new digs. I don't think we're gonna get high-end luxury strivers. Matter of fact, we're so sure that we're not gonna get luxury, high-end strivers, that we've built in a lot of firewalls to keep out, what, ne'er-do-wells? So in five or ten or seventeen years, or in fifty years, or seventy years to match the age of the houses that are right behind it? What's the management property gonna be gonna do then? We're looking really long-term, way, way down. And there's no guarantee that the property manager in fifty years, in forty years, in thirty years, in ten years, is gonna have the same standards that Mr. Dunkle has. None. No guarantee. No guarantee. And you're asking the residents in that neighborhood, in the Devon Air neighborhood, that have put their thirty-year mortgages onto things. That's their guarantee. Every month, they put down their promise. That's their guarantee. But we have no guarantee with who's gonna be the property manager or even the property owner in any number of years. It's open-ended. So I'm asking you, I'm asking you to look way down on the other end of that, that telescope and ask yourself in forty years, what's this property gonna be like? Who's gonna be living in there? Who can guarantee who's gonna be living there? Who? We don't know. And our firewall, our firewall against this development, that Mr. Dunkle has built several, because we apparently have to be very afraid of the kind of people that would move into such an apartment, that we have those many firewalls. Our firewall against this development are you folks. You are our guarantee. You turned this development down before. You looked in your hearts. You said, this doesn't fit. It just doesn't fit. It doesn't fit in Livonia. There are no high-rise multi-unit rental units in section thirty-six or thirty-five or thirty-four. There just aren't any. And this is gonna sit there. And it's gonna attract more rental units in any open little spit of land that we can find.
You have five minutes, Mr. Schmidt.
Oh, thank you, sorry. I didn't mean to overstay my.
It's okay, it's okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Vote no. We're counting on you.
We appreciate your comments. Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Uh, next person? Good evening, ma'am.
Hi, Cheryl Lupu, two-nine-eight-six-four, Orange Lawn. And I have to agree with everything he just said. That was pretty awesome about the firewalls. And we have lived there for many of years and we still haven't gotten any thing resolved with the trucks running behind our homes and the vibrations from the trucks from our homes. Nor that wall has even ever been maintained. It's crumbling behind our homes. Um, at one time they had knocked, um, our fence down and that was never replaced either. My husband just kinda straightened it up and kinda left it like that. We were never even, um, asked if it needed to be taken care of. I'm tired of always having to ask you guys, please don't do this, because it's our backyard. It's not your backyard. And our backyards mean something to us. We like to have our families over. We like to enjoy our backyards. And it's bad enough, we have to call the police over these trucks. And I have phones, my, all these pictures that these trucks never go away. And we're still calling. And we're using our police for this matter, which we shouldn't be, private property, eh? But here we go. And the police can't remove these trucks either because they have a delivery. Well, that's not our problem. They're, they tell them to shut the trucks off. And then as soon as the police leave, they restart them. So here we go with all of this issue also again. So now we're gonna have more people on this berm looking into our yards, let alone up high above looking into our yards. It's, it's just a non-going thing that we don't need in our backyards. It's, there's no privacy. Where, where is the privacy laws anymore? There's none. And the dogs and the people, you know, it's just, there's a lot going on. And we've had enough. We've, we've, I think we've dealt with enough. Let this project go somewhere else. Sorry, but that's just my own opinion. It's just, doesn't look good. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lupu. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Jeannie Sullivan. I live at two-nine-nine-four-four, Orange Lawn. Um, and I'm directly behind this proposed site. Um, it's too bad we don't have interjection between them and you and us because so many questions I have, like, why do we have another petition number? What's, you know, do we have two petitions now for the same property or is this just a continuation? That confused me as well as a lot of other people. Um, I'd like to know, uh, it's been brought up before that when this first started, we went and canvassed a lot of our neighbors and asked them, you know, how did they feel about it? And we walked at the neighborhoods and talked to people. We got a petition of everybody that was opposed to rezoning this because they didn't want this high-rise behind us. And we turned in petitions and signatures and nobody ever talks about that. It's like, it all got swept under the rug. Like, did we not bring forth a number of people with signatures saying they didn't want this? That it was against what they wanted for Livonia? That's kind of a, uh, I'm sorry, I got a lack of words here in my head. But, um, the other thing that I think is really important to me is, we've been through this before. We get a lot of very empty promises. It all sounds real, real nice, fine and dandy when you're talking about it's gonna be this, it's gonna, it's gonna be this, it's gonna be this. And it all sounds wonderful and beautiful until you start to think about, been this route before. Oh, we're gonna give you all these trees. I know behind my house, I've never got all those trees. And they're talking about, they're gonna upkeep the property. There's a sidewalk that runs right behind that wall. You can't find the sidewalk. The wall has graffiti on it. There's shopping carts back there and trash. These were all things that they said that they were gonna take care of. You know, they, then it comes back to their management. So the property that we have, they're gonna totally ignore again so they can look at the new property. It just isn't making sense. It's, it's not fitting. Uh, we had a new Amazon coming in there. We've got a Chick-fil-A coming in there. We've got, um, massive accidents there all the time. Uh, the traffic is horrendous. Uh, granted, a lot of buildings and it's all good things. Again, I have to bring up with the high-rise. When you're, this high-rise is gonna look right into the auto zone at Walmart. We're, they're working on cars. Um, sure, if you're staring at Plymouth Road, it's probably gonna be nice. But people coming down Plymouth Road aren't gonna be attracted to that particular piece of property that has apartments on it. It's like, just doesn't fit. They're either going into Walmarts, they're going into Targets. Uh, I know if I had children, I wouldn't want them in, coming in and out of there. The traffic that goes through there, that cuts behind Walmart and behind Target, people in, that live around there or shop there a lot, know that they can avoid traffic if they go through and they go out the other entrance or they go out this entrance. There's many entrances coming in and out of there that are being inundated. It says, no turn, no left turn, no right turn. Still, left, right turn, left turn, left turn. I worry about the people that are gonna leave this apartment and go across the shop. Uh, that's, you, you get an old grandma going across and that's me. Um, I don't wa- I don't run that fast. And I don't wanna be dodging cars. I wouldn't wanna be dodging cars. We're supposed to be able to walk that shopping center in the first place. It was supposed to be a walkable community. There's no walking there. You head for the store you wanna go to. Nobody just strolls through unless maybe you stop at Mancy's to get an ice cream or something. But it's, it's not a walkable area. So I don't know how they're gonna make this a walkable area. My other concern is, again, our retention pond. Our retention pond protects us. It keeps us from being flooded. And so many people have been flooded over the past few years. It's a big protection for us. They're already talking about tapping into the water sewage that, that we already have that runs underneath the berm. They're gonna tap into that. I'm wondering how much more pressure it's going to put on our retention pond. I worry about the neighborhood. Promises need to be put into writing so that the city has recourse to go after them when it's not being done. We've called about our berm. We've called about the trees. Um, it goes in one ear and out the other. So the city needs to have some kind of recourse to go after them and say, look, we're getting complaints. This isn't being done. Do something about it. It's up to you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. I, before you leave, I, I just wanted to explain for your benefit and maybe for anyone else in the audience who, who doesn't quite understand the process thoroughly, because we do this every day, you know, this is our, this is our job. It's not yours.
Thank goodness.
So, uh, ju- just so you understand why, why you may see two different petition numbers.
Yes.
And you may say that, hey, we already went through this process and you, and you did, you, you provided, uh, signatures and, and, you know, petitions in the past to this, uh, to this board and to the city council. The way the process works is initially the petitioner came to us for a rezoning of this property. It was already zoned to be commercial and they wanted to rezone it for residential use.
Yes.
So that was the first process. That was the first petition number that you saw. And when you presented, uh, signatures of opposition and so on to that, that was for that process. And that's all part of that record, uh, for that rezoning. The rezoning was, came through us. We gave a recommendation for or against that. That then goes on to city council. City council had an initial meeting on it and then they hold the item waiting for, uh, so they haven't, um, finished the rezoning process. They're waiting for the site plan that we're dealing with tonight to catch up to it. Uh, so now here's the second petition that, that's been filed by the petitioner, which is for the site plan, which is the details of what the buildings look like, where, how they're laid out, you know, all these types of details. And we're gonna, again, make a recommendation for or against that. That will go to city council. City council will then start bringing those, those two items together, the rezoning and the site plan, and make their final decision. Uh, but all the information that was provided to us previously, the letters that we've received, the signatures and so on, they're all part of that record. They haven't gone away and, uh, we still have them in our record here, so, uh, we haven't forgot about those things.
Okay, thank you. I have just one more thing.
Yes.
We had a really elaborate visual display of their site plan already. That's why we got so confused because the zoning was one thing, but now we already saw this visual of what they, their intention was. I thought that was their site plan.
And that, that make, that, that's understandable. What, what happens typically during rezoning requests is they will offer a conceptual site plan. It's a concept of what they intend on putting on the property. It's not the final plan.
Yes.
It's not fully worked out. It just shows how the, the property could be laid out in, in that particular zoning.
Understand.
Which is why when you see this one, in the case, uh, the petitioner has increased the size of the berm. They've added some additional screening. They've made changes to that site plan that you saw before, trying to fine-tune it and hopefully make it a better plan, uh, for the community. So that's, that's kinda why you see this, this happened twice. I hope that makes sense.
It does, it does. And I'm, I'm just gonna reiterate one thing.
Go ahead.
It's one thing to say you're gonna do it. It's another thing to follow through.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Uh, next we have another person on my right.
Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am.
Nancy Haverlin, two-nine-nine-two-eight, Orange Lawn Street. Um, I'm probably gonna repeat some of the things people said. Um, one of my concerns is where it's being placed. I went and looked at the one on Hagerty Road. And I think it's a, it's a fit. It's a fit. They have nice restaurants. They have nice shopping and things over there. But where we're at, to be like next to a Walmart, which actually we have a high-crime Walmart and Target. I don't actually know anybody that even shops there. We personally do not. And especially after five or six in the evening. But, um, like where somebody would wanna live there and drive past the blood plasma and live by the Walmart and the Target, it just doesn't fit to me. The Vision twenty-one, I think, is great. I think, and like I said, I saw the one on Hagerty. I think it's a perfect fit. I do not think this is a fit. So I'm sure I'm repeating what some people already said, but we really feel this way and I hope you do too. Thanks.
We appreciate your comments. Thank you. Good evening, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Cheryl McNell. I live at two-nine-nine-six-one, Orange Lawn and have resided there since nineteen sixty-six. We've seen a lot of change.
I can imagine.
We've seen a lot of promise and, um, I feel that this, um, project, property is, it's not a fit at all. It's, it's very dangerous for very many reasons. And I feel like this corner is really being overextended. overextended. Now, we're talking 200 apartments, anywhere from four to 600 approved people, okay? May I please ask you a question?
Please address your questions to us.
Okay, I'm sorry. I, I'm curious to know how the management team, how extended are they? Overextended? If we're gonna add anywhere from six to eight hundred more people on their very fat portfolio, and Mr. Showstack, how many properties does he own? And how does this benefit Livonia or us? Right now, our major concern is the children and the residents of the area, okay? We don't wanna see any accidents, we don't wanna see any fatalities, especially with the child. This is really important, because people aren't paying attention. They're on their phone, they're not watching where they're going, where they're driving. I mean, even Wonderland now, with, the way the, all the different entrance ways, how it starts, it's pretty confusing. And if a new family moves in, or several, you know, they're not gonna know where they're going, and there's gonna be some trouble. But, not only that, they're gonna get bored. You're talking six to eight hundred people. One courtyard, one pool? How many people will that pool fit? And how many people will that courtyard entertain? How loud is the volume gonna be? I live directly in back of that wall. I look at it, I will look at this, out my living room window, I will view this building every day. Every day. I've been here 54 years. Excuse me for a moment while I gather myself here, I wanna present this properly. No one can afford anything these days. Who's to say that they won't start this project and not be able to complete it due to outrageous economic times? Trucks cannot provide needed materials because of skyrocketing gas prices, in turn, making it almost impossible to meet any deadlines with everything so uncertain right now. We don't even know, right now, Walmart has no food, by the way. We can't feed our own families and ourselves right now. I just went shopping, everything's barren, it's not getting any better. It's been like this for about a year. There's not enough food at Walmart to feed these people. I just thought, that's an outstanding point. The stores can't handle the volume. The subdivision can't handle it. Livonia Police can't handle the crime rate. And when you dig up that burn, I can't handle the big rats in my yard, like when they tore up Jeffries. We all had rats in our backyards, didn't we?
Yeah.
We did. They're gonna mess with the sewer system, they're gonna dig up all the nature in that field, and where's it gonna go? In our backyard. I've seen dead rats in my street, I don't wanna do it again. I mean, come on, they're bigger than my pups. Seriously. But, all in all, the economy really has me worried, and if something goes halt right in the middle of this project, then what do we have? An empty, half-built project that is going nowhere. Thousands of millions of dollars lost, nothing gained. This is a chance Livonia's taking, and I think the risk is way too big. Livonia's not gonna make a profit on it. Livonia's gonna have to enforce more law, more fire, more everything. And right now, we can't get building materials or anything to survive on our own as far as anything. I mean, who's to say we're gonna have water in a year? We don't know where we're going. This isn't a good idea, and I really don't see anybody paying that kind of money for 500 some odd square foot to live in a parking lot next to Walmart. There's no pride in that, and I'm sorry, I don't think classy people would do that. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. McNaul.
And consideration. Please take the children into consideration.
Definitely, thank you. Appreciate your comments. Any questions that are asked for the petitioner, we will try to get those answered by the petitioner at the end of this time, so thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, my name is Michael Haverlin. I live at 299-28 Orange Lawn Street. This project is directly behind me. The first issue I wanna address is the meeting between the residents on Orange Lawn and Showstack. None of us were invited to that meeting. I talked to all the neighbors, not one of us were invited to this so-called meeting, wherever it was. I just wanted to say that after I left the Marine Corps, I settled in Livonia, and I've been there 50 years. I raised a family, I helped raise two grandchildren. What, that they, they wanna propose behind us is not a fit. It just isn't. There were promises made, a few, many years back, that they would have two rows of trees behind our homes. To this day, I don't have the second row. It's never been addressed. We asked that they put in a sprinkler system. They did. They did a good job. The only thing is, they forgot to turn it on. So, I personally, over the years, have called City of Livonia ordinance 40 times and said, please have 'em cut the weeds. It's just barren back there. It, it just, this is a continuation of what we have now, and, and we still don't have what they promised. That, this is not a fit. This doesn't belong behind us. This, as I said, this is directly behind my property. This is going to be outrageous. I just say, please vote no. Please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haverlin. Thank you for your service, too. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Victoria Kolewski. My address is 299-60 Orange Lawn, directly behind the proposed zoning change. Obviously, this is my last opportunity to speak to you folks on this issue, and I'll speak as quickly as possible. First of all, regarding the meeting that was set up to meet with the Showstack people at Mama Mia Restaurant on Plymouth Road in Livonia. Again, none of these neighbors that showed up today, whose properties are being affected, were notified. None of us. This is directly, my address is 299-60. Compare that to the address of the project. This is in my backyard. I was not alerted. In fact, I was told afterward that they were looking for people who had positive reactions to the project. So, I guess that's probably why I was left out. When I last addressed this commission, I said that many of you are aware of better-suited properties for this project. And I know that at least one person on the panel had agreement, shook a head. In our Livonia home, we raised two brilliant sons, one a Churchill graduate, one a Franklin graduate. Both have become independent business owners, one in Redford with offices across the state, and one in Livonia. And I'm very proud to say that both have thriving businesses. My children grew up with, in Livonia, family first. My very best friend of 30 years and neighbor grew up in the same home she lives in today. In her Livonia home, she raised three children, one who grew up to be one of Livonia's finest. My next-door neighbor grew up and graduated from Livonia schools. My other next-door neighbor and her daughter have been living in Livonia for over 30 years. Her daughter attended Livonia schools. Livonia family first. This is what is referred to as an established, strong, and healthy neighborhood. An apartment complex is not a neighborhood, it's a complex. The petitioner wants a zoning change, the zoning changed for property directly behind our houses. He's asked for a change from C2 general business to an M2 neighborhood multifamily. It's not a neighborhood. It's a minimum three-story, 201 apartment building. It's not part of any neighborhood. I happen to believe this is just to provide shoppers to every business on the corner of Plymouth and Middlebelt. Again, I say, the developer's own representative said at a prior meeting, this project will help the surrounding businesses survive. So, I remind all here that this is about the developer's financial interest and ultimately his pocket. He hasn't kept the promises he made years ago, when he tore down the Wonderland Mall and put up the Wonderland Village. Two staggered rows of pines to obscure and shield our homes from light at night, and to buffer truck noise and et cetera. Promises made and promises broken. So, my dear Livonia Planning Commission, here's my question. Why are future residents of an apartment complex more important than the concerns of the current citizenry and even our property values? We are the true existing neighborhood. We are saying no to this ridiculous project, and literally saying the words, not in my Please don't break the promise of Livonia family first. As I said at the last meeting, Livonia family first, and this was at a council meeting, show us with your vote. I close with this. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. May God bless and keep us all. And if you are a believer, please pray for the people of the Ukraine. Hashtag, I stand with Ukraine. Good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Kolewski. Gentlemen, over on my left.
I thought it'd be a little different, give this podium some attention, too.
Yeah, it's been kind of, kind of neglected today, so thank you.
My name is Michael McNaul. I live at, I live at 299-61 Orange Lawn, right across the street from Vicki. And as my wife was saying, we look, our front window faces into this project. I guess some of the concerns I have, a lot of people have already brought up, families saying, you know, I live in the Walmart, I live in Walmart parking lot. They're gonna have children, they're gonna go to school, they're gonna meet friends that live in the neighborhood. Okay, I'm gonna go to the park and play with Joey. I Googled it today, it's one mile around Wonderland down Orange Lawn, or one mile around down Milburn to get to Leveney Park, walking, well, driving, walking, it's one mile, it's a 25-minute walk. You know what, you're gonna want your kids to walk, and half of it's to Wonderland Parking Lot. I think it's ridiculous and dangerous. Touchdown right now, the shelves on Walmart are pretty empty. You're gonna put this building in now, people are gonna go there to shop there. They can't handle the volume now. A lot of people mentioned they don't shop at Walmart now, so they're gonna go somewhere else to shop. I've lived here since, let's see, I moved here, went from Wisconsin when I was five, I'm 64, I've lived here for 59 years. I grew up with Wonderland being an open-air mall. It was great, it was fun, especially in the winter. Then they closed it, I was disappointed. They tore it down, said they were gonna build a new open-air mall. Fantastic! This isn't what I expected. You can't walk from one store to another. I mean, even walking from Walmart to Target's a hike. I'm really disappointed with what they did with it. I'm not sure this is a great idea either. It's dangerous for kids, it's not a good thing. I mean, the people that live there, like, I think Jeanne had mentioned, you know, one side's gonna be looking into Walmart's garage, the other side's gonna be looking at a back wall, one side gets to look at Plymouth Road, which isn't bad, the other side's gonna be looking at a water retention ditch. I can't see people paying that kind of money for that kind of a thing. I just don't think it'll work. I guess that's all I've got to say right now.
Well, thanks for your comments, Ms. McNaul. Anyone else in our audience? I see another gentleman coming forward. There we go, we got one over here. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name's Don Sheple, I live at 29161 Grandin, which is about half-mile or so from where the site's gonna be. Couple of concerns I have with this is the 201 unit in that area, it's a pretty good-sized unit for that area. And I love how it's described as high-end apartment complexes, luxury complexes. No, not when you're putting it in the same buildings with Walmart, Target, and all that. I don't see Macy's, I don't see Kohl's, I don't see any of the more of the Jacobsons, any of that around there. No, we got the low-end stores, and that's what we have, is low-end apartments. You can say all you want, $1,300 for an apartment nowadays is cheap. Okay, so, we're not talking high-end, we're not talking the luxury. Let's go compare it to the apartments on the north side. I think they're probably a little more expensive. It doesn't fit in the areas many of the people here have said. Putting in an apartment complex in the middle of a shopping center, that's basically what you're doing. It's in the middle of a shopping center. Makes no sense. I don't see too many people, and they've mentioned time, wanting to come in here and look around and go, wow, what a place to live. Let me, God, Walmart's right next door, what can be better? No, this isn't Livonia, what would be, I'd consider, anything. It's lowering everything in the area. And it looks like in this side of Livonia, the south side of Livonia, we're gonna fill every little nook and cranny weekend with whatever we can. But you look at what they're building on the north side, things are a whole lot different. And I think maybe the people on the south end of Livonia really start to need, get a little more attention. Okay? That's all I have to say.
Well, thank you, Mr. Sheple, appreciate that. Anyone else in our audience wishing to speak for or against this item? I don't see anyone else coming forward. Thank you, everyone, for speaking, and going through this. I'm gonna give an opportunity for our petitioner to come back to the podium and address anything that was discussed, or if there's any questions that we may have additionally for the petitioner. Mr. Showstack, did you want to address anything that you had heard?
Yeah, I wanna address, and then we also have our traffic study.
Okay, if you wanna.
There were things, just some questions and comments on that, so, Mike, if you wanted to kick that off, and then I'll answer some of the questions if I have to.
All right, sounds good, thank you, Mr. Showstack. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, my name's Mike Labaty, I work for Fishbeck. Fishbeck's a consulting firm, didn't know that. I don't know if you've all had the, the study long enough to try to dig into it or not.
We do have it in our packet, so, that was provided to us, thank you.
So, I don't know if we wanna go blow-by-blow or page-by-page with that, but how much any of you know about doing traffic studies, what they include or anything like that? So, I'll, I'll just tell you that there is an accepted practice methodology that you have to go through. So, we did that. We confirmed the scope of the work, of which, what intersections to study and things like that with MDOT, who owns Plymouth, and Wayne County, who owns Middlebelt. So, if there were comments or questions or issues that they knew about, they would've asked us to incorporate that into the study. So, we did that. These studies, when you collect traffic data, let's say we went out there last week, or two weeks ago, or whatever it was, that would be kind of an existing conditions analysis. And you'll see in the study, there's stuff in there about level of service and delays, and level of service A is good and F is not good. D is considered acceptable, that kind of thing. So, there's an existing conditions analysis from when we collected the data. But then, what you have to do is, you have to grow the traffic and add things that are gonna be in the background, that are gonna happen between the time we collected the data and the time the development's complete. So, there's a time period in there where other things that we know about are gonna be in there, but also, just, just in general, traffic tends to grow over, well, depends on where you are, but for the most part, southeast Michigan, that's what happens. So, you can look up data, and you can look up information from SEMCOG and places like that to get some sort of a growth factor. In particular, we, we knew about the Chick-fil-A and the redevelopment of that site, so we, we incorporated- So we incorporated that on top of growing the traffic to the completion date of the project. So you have a existing background, and background is that everything except the development. So you get an idea of what it's gonna look like and how well the intersections are gonna operate, up to the point when you add the traffic for this site. So that's basically the impact of this development, would be the difference between background and, in the study, it shows future. So, I don't know if you had a chance to look at that, but the numbers are, not, this is not, this is not gonna be a development that's gonna, believe it or not, I mean, obviously people are gonna start throwing things maybe, but this is not gonna generate a lot of traffic with two or three access points to create any significant differences in delay or level of service. Just to give you an idea, the background morning peak hour at the intersection of Plymouth and Middlebelt, that overall intersection operates at 47.6 seconds of delay. You kind of wonder how you get that close with the calculations, and I guess I wonder that sometimes, too. But it is accepted practice. They've got a lot of really cool computer models and programs and simulations you can look at to figure that out. That's the morning peak hour. And then the afternoon peak hour is 63.5. Both of those, the 47 is D, 63 is E. But that's, that's how that intersection will operate without this development four or five years from now. In the, in the future, when you add this development traffic to that intersection and the other intersections, you end up with only 48.8 in the morning. Not very much. A few seconds of delay, overall. And 65.4, and that's, that's in those studies, or in the tables in the, in the study. The impact of this on that intersection is not very great. Kind of another, kind of rule of thumb, I'm not sure that this is, might not, you might not view this as necessarily pertinent, but maybe it is. I don't know. Maybe you're trying to draw some traffic conclusions out of this. If, for example, we built 100,000-square-foot shopping plaza there instead of the apartment In the morning peak hour, we would have total 96 more trips for the shopping center than you would for the apartment. So another, 100 more trips. So would you notice that in an hour, in the morning peak hour at the shopping center or even at that intersection? Maybe not. It's only a couple of cars, one, you know, in the morning for 60, for 60 minutes. In the afternoon, though, the PM peak hour is a marked difference. You'd have over 440 more trips with a 100 square, 100,000-square-foot shopping center than you would, you will, with this development. That's a big difference. That, that's, that makes, makes or breaks it. That, that's not a good, I mean, that's, that's an important number to kind of keep in mind. This is a good traffic planning thing to do because the differences are significant. I don't know if 100,000-square-foot shopping center or shopping plaza is necessarily by right be able to build there or not. It kind of looks like it would be. I'm just throwing that out there. On Saturday and Sunday, the differences are unbelievable. On a Saturday, it's 7,186 trips less to build this than to have 100,000-square-foot shopping center. And on Sunday, it's 3,510. That's, those numbers are big. There, that's a difference that's, you'll be able, you would be able to feel easily. From the standpoint of, of the operation of the adjacent, the two driveways that are signalized, they are, they work well, and they're gonna continue to work well, background in, in future. And the impact at Middlebelt and Plymouth, like I said, is minimal. Now, I didn't do that analysis for a shopping center traffic. I'm just giving those numbers just to kind of get an idea of the difference in traffic. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Labady. I, I tend to find this stuff fascinating because I spent 10 years on our traffic commission reading traffic studies, so I kind of enjoy this stuff, but I know for most people, this kind of makes their eyes water.
Right.
It's the nature of the business, but I think it's safe to assume that what your executive summary and your, your general summary is saying is that the, your anticipated traffic impact to this, from this development as a residential development is significantly less than it would be if it was a commercial development. Is that?
Correct.
Is that the simple, one-liner version of this?
Yep. That's exactly it.
All right, good. Mr. Long?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Just a couple of questions about the study. So with the, your, your current study was done a couple of weeks ago. That's where you gathered all your, all your data, in the last few weeks, month?
Let's, let's go with them, about three or four weeks.
Okay.
That's when we collected the data.
Sure. And with that data, we graded out to a D and an E, if I heard you correctly. I'm assuming that's on a scale similar to school, A through F, or is that?
D passes, yes.
Okay. Okay.
That's just at that, at the intersection of Plymouth and Middlebelt.
Understand, understand. Are you aware of any studies done prior? Do you have access to any of them? Any data that was collected in 2018, 19? Anything like that? Or are you just living off the data that you collected in 2022?
That's an odd question. If I had, if I had data that was, if data's more than two years old, it's not valid.
Okay.
It's a strange two years, though.
It's been a strange two years, though.
Yeah, right, right.
And my concern is...
No, I understand what your concern is. I did the study for the Chick-fil-A site, too.
Okay.
And so that, that data, I think, was collected just prior to all of us hunkering down for a year.
Okay.
And so we did compare the 2022 stuff with the Chick-fil-A data, and it has grown. So we're, we're coming out of our bunkers now. But for the most part, in the state of Michigan right now, MDOT and most of the road agencies and cities feel as though traffic is pretty much back to where it ought to be. There are some COVID adjustments that, that some communities have asked for. They've been pretty remote from here, but southeast Michigan is kind of like game on, and actually the volumes are higher than they were before we hunkered down.
Interesting. Okay.
It's kind of an interesting problem, but it, it feels like it took me forever to get over here today.
Well, I was curious about that because you, you said that, you know, you added in your, you took the historic data, and then you started adding in for what you project the additional usage would be. And I was wondering if there was any addition in for other people. We had some of the residents testify earlier, you know, how they work from home now. I know a lot of people in Livonia that are working from home now, and I don't know if they'll ever go back or if they were, but I didn't know if that was factored in at all. When you, when you did your adjustment for the new traffic out of, out of the apartment complex, you know, was there any also additional adjustment for additional?
So if anything, it would be more conservative, right? If I forecast the trips based on data from the Institute of Transportation Engineers that was collected, all these other sites across the country, people weren't, not as many people were working from home back then. I'm not sure that the work-from-home thing is, one, is long-term at all. That's kind of what I've been reading about it. Because it is kind of important in my business, we, I, you know, this comes up all the time. And for, for whatever reason, there's an awful lot of people working from home sometimes, and yet the volumes are higher prior to COVID starting.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot to sort through. And so I just was curious about the parameters.
So we're not, I don't, there's no fatal flaw or any outlandish estimate, one way or another, either high or low, I don't think, from this, based on what we, we were able to ascertain.
No, and I, and I wasn't trying to imply that there was.
No, no, I understand.
I was just trying to understand the, the data collection and, and what we were looking at. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Good discussion. It is interesting to know how COVID does affect these things. Any other questions for our traffic engineer that's up here? Any other commissioners? I think, I think you're all set, Mr. Labady.
We're good. Thank you.
I'm gonna go to Mr. Shostak.
Skip. I'll try to do the best I can here, as we've all been here for a little while, so I don't wanna take up too much more of your time. I'll try to answer a lot of the comments and questions we heard from the residents. And just to kind of add on to our traffic engineer's point is, this is a much more lower-impact use than what the current zoning allows. And, you know, we have this building 300 feet back from the berm, where the current zoning obviously allows much closer, 60 to 80 feet. And a lot of the concerns I heard from the residents of truck noises, you know, that's not gonna be an issue with our multifamily development, one, from the distance away, and of course, we don't have the same delivery trucks that Walmart and Target have, or the dumpsters that are behind the buildings near the berm. You know, that's, we're obviously, again, 300 feet away, residential dumpsters, the way we're gonna monitor them is more weekly turnover, or even more so as needed, a few times weekly is what I meant to say. So I think that a lot of the concerns are on kind of the current situation, and look, obviously, you know, there's questions about the berm and, you know, what's been upkept and all that sort of thing. You know, a lot of, I think, the comments were at Walmart and Target, and, you know, they own that, they control that. We're obviously willing to work with the city and those companies to try to get them to do more, but, you know, we don't control that. That is their property. And what we're obviously wanting and willing to do here is increase the berm like we've talked about to make it better, and to the extent we could do that, even more so outside of our property, we, we would, but that is not something that we control. That is Walmart and Target's property. And then just on the overall fit, you know, I mean, the Livonia 21 Vision tags this property as mixed-use. Well, the rest of the property is commercial development, and, you know, this is now the residential portion, you know, so we feel that this fits in with what the Livonia 21 Vision outlined is what they wanted to see here, and we believe it is a good fit. Also, we're Chick-fil-A, Amazon Fresh opening up down the street. You know, there's been a lot of criticism that, oh, it's next to Walmart, it's next to Plasma Center, but I mean, I think Chick-fil-A and Amazon coming to this neighborhood says a lot about this neighborhood. I mean, companies want to be here. You know, I, I disagree that no one wants to be here because it's in, it's next to a Walmart. So I think that there is things happening here. This is a 30-plus-million-dollar development in this part of Livonia. I would like to think that is a good thing, that's gonna bring jobs, that's gonna bring good economic, economic activity to the area that, you know, is continuing to actually, to see some activity with Walmart, with Amazon and Chick-fil-A. And lastly, you know, we're a 102-year-old company. We're based in Livonia. We've been doing business in Livonia for 50-plus years. I'm the fourth generation of my family to do business here. We're not a fly-by-night developer. I know people, maybe in the crowd will say otherwise, but we're gonna do what we say here, and we're gonna do, and we want the city to hold us to whatever we need to do. And, you know, we think that this is a nice development, and we would, you know, really love, you know, to have some support, have your support here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Before you leave, Mr. Shostak, let me see if there's any questions for you from our commission. Is there any commissioners with questions for our petitioner? If not, I do have one question. Maybe it's best for the architect to address, but you're welcome to as well, Mr. Shostak. Did you want to detail the sightlines and how that's been addressed? That was, that was one thing that was brought up a number of times, and you had made some changes recently in your plans to, to deal with sightlines. So I'm gonna let Mark, I think he's got a cross-section, and then I'll, I'll let Mr. Schobers talk about that a little bit. Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, so with the increasing the berm width, adding the third row of trees, it allowed us a larger flat area on top to where we get two rows of trees up against the residence with ornamental trees. So now we're getting, it's just not everything they're looking at, they get color in the springtime. And then we're putting this eight-foot vinyl fence, so that provides 100% visual buffer between it. So as you can see from that diagram, there is no visibility of the building. The line of sight is over the top of the roof.
Okay, and then how is that area gonna be maintained in terms of making sure it's, it's cut and that there's no access to it from, are residents gonna be walking in that area, those, that bermed area? How, how is that gonna work?
Sure. Mr. Tumina, if you can go to the slide before. So the whole rear area towards the residence is enclosed. There's a chain-link fence on the eastern portion, so residents or people wandering at Walmart, the truck drivers, they can't get back there. So we're trying to provide as much privacy and security as possible. There will be a gate in that area to allow someone to go in there and maintain it with a lawnmower, go in there, pull weeds, and do all that maintenance that you'd have to do on a weekly basis. So there will be access there for the maintenance. It will be locked, so that only maintenance can go in there.
Okay. All right, good. I appreciate you detailing that for us. I think that covers the only question I had for you. Thank you for, for that. Is there any other comments or questions from any commissioners? Ms. McQ?
Just to restate one thing, and I think, I think this is what you were saying earlier, but Shostak will be responsible for maintaining this property. Am I correct? They're going to do the maintenance? I know you said Walmart and Target, it's owned by Walmart and Target, and I get that part. Well, but it's going to be underneath Shostak's responsibility to maintain all of that area that we just talked about.
The, the berm, correct.
Under, my management, I don't know who, but they're gonna be, right. But it's gonna be under their name. We can't stand here and say, "It's Walmart, it's Target, it's..."
Yes, to answer your question, Betsy. And then, the only reason we don't have those other ones, Walmart and Target, is Walmart and Target generally, almost every time they buy, they demand to buy the real estate. When they buy the real estate, of course, they're gonna maintain it.
Right.
You know, this, these are our apartments, we're not selling the apartments, they're not condos to the residents. So our onsite management, from the commercial side that's already on the property, in tandem with Justin Dunkel and Paragon's team. So yes, Shostak.
I just think that's an important differentiation to make. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McQ. Any other questions or comments from any of the commissioners? If not, I think I can go to our commissioners and look for a motion.
How long will construction take? I know a bit.
That's a question I, normally, I don't like to take questions, you know, thrown out from the audience, but that's a fair question. So I, I'm gonna just ask Mr. Shostak or one of his representatives if he would.
Approximately, approximately 15 months.
Oh, that's right. 15-month project, okay. Thank you. Again, I'm gonna go to the commission and look for a motion.
Mr. Chair. I'll take a shot at approving resolution. That this request to construct an apartment complex, Wonderland Flats, on the properties located at 29707 and 30273 Plymouth Road, is approved, subject to city council approval in the following conditions. That the site plan identified as drawing C4 dated June 1, 2022, as revised, prepared by Stonefield Engineering and Design, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number two, all parking spaces except the required barrier-free parking shall be double-stripped and shall be 10 feet in width as required, and the number and location of the barrier-free parking spots shall be provided at the direction of the inspection department. Number three, that the landscaping plans identified as drawing C9 and C10, and the landscaping detailed plans identified as drawing C11, all dated April 27, 2022, prepared by Stonefield Engineering and Design, are hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number four, that all disturbed lawn areas shall be sodded in lieu of hydroseeding. Number five, that underground sprinklers are to be provided for all landscaped and sodded areas, and all planted materials shall be installed to the satisfaction of the inspection department and thereafter permanently maintained in healthy condition. Number six, that the building elevation plans identified as A201, A20, A201A, A201B, and A111, all dated April 22, 2022, prepared by Spire Design Group, are hereby approved and shall be adhered to, to... and shall be adhered to, to, adhered to, except that the majority of the apartments shall contain full balconies and either masonry, brick or burnished block, metal panels or fiber cement siding, shall replace all areas shown having vinyl siding. Number seven, that the three walls of the trash dumpster area shall be constructed of the same brick used in the construction of buildings, or in the event a poured wall is substituted, the walls' design, texture, and color shall match that of the buildings. The enclosure gate shall be of solid panel steel construction or durable, long-lasting solid panel fiberglass. Number eight, that the location and/or orientation of the dumpster enclosure on the west side of the buildings shall be adjusted similar to the dumpster enclosure on the east side to improve access and safety. Number nine, all light fixtures shall not exceed 20 feet in height and shall be shielded to minimize glare trespassing on adjacent properties and roadways. Number 10, that the network of sidewalks within the apartment complex shall connect with the pedestrian sidewalks and pathways of the adjacent retail establishments. Number 11, that the petitioner shall install a gate or other type of opening along the east side of the complex to allow residents of Wonderland Flats to access the adjacent retail property. Number 12, that the issues as outlined in the correspondence dated May 17, 2022, from the fire marshal, including providing automatically sprink, automatic sprinkler systems and fire alarm systems, onsite hydrants, and fire access road, shall be resolved to the satisfaction of the Department of Public Safety, Livonia Fire and Rescue. Number 13, that only conforming signage is approved of this petition, and any additional signage shall be submitly submitted separately for review and approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Number 14, that no LED band, light band or exposed neon shall be permitted on this site, including but not limited to the building or around the windows. Number 15, that the specific plans referenced in this approving resolution shall be submitted to the inspection department at the time the building permits are applied for. And number 16, pursuant to Section 13.13 of Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance, this approval is valid for a period of one year only from the date of the approval by City Council, and unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of the said period. And I'd also like to specifically reference the, that if this moves forward, that the trees and wa, and vinyl fence are in place as soon as possible to visually protect the residents from construction and activities on the site.
Safe to say that you would like those to be erected before any building takes place?
Yeah.
Okay. Understood, Mr. Tormina? Is there support for that motion?
Support.
All right. We have a motion to approve by Mr. Caremagnow and supported by Mr. Bonjero, as written with an additional modification of the tree and fence area to be completed before building. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing no discussion, Secretary, please call the role on a motion to approve.
Caremagnow votes aye. Mr. Bonjero?
Aye.
Mrs. Smiley?
No.
Ms. McHugh?
No.
Mr. Long?
No.
Mr. Ventura?
No.
Chairman Wilshaw?
No. Motion fails, and we now have the floor open again for a, another motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ventura.
I'll offer a denying resolution. That this request to construct an apartment complex, Wonderland Flats, on the properties at 29707 and 30273, Plymouth Road is denied for the following reasons. Number one, that the petitioner has failed to affirmatively show that the proposed use is in compliance with all the special and general waiver use standards and requirements set forth in Section 3.08, 6.04, and 13.13 of Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance. Number two, that too many issues remain unresolved, including increased traffic concerns, building architecture, signage, site layout, compatibility with surrounding retail uses, and close proximity to the adjacent residential neighborhood. Number three, that the site lacks the capacity to handle the intensity associated with the 201-unit apartment complex, and would therefore be detrimental and not in harmony with the character of the surrounding commercial center and adjacent neighborhood. Number four, that the apartment complex would create significant adverse impacts on adjoining parcels, public services, and community planning efforts. Number five, that the proposal conflicts with the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance to promote and encourage a balanced and appropriate mix of uses. And number six, that the petitioner has failed to comply with all the concerns deemed necessary for the safety and welfare of the city and its residents.
All right. Is there support for that motion?
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Ventura, supported by Mrs. Smiley. This is a motion to deny. Is there discussion on that motion? Hearing no discussion, if the secretary is ready, please call the role on a motion to deny.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Mrs. Smiley?
Aye.
Ms. McHugh?
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero?
No.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Caremagnow votes no, and Chairman Wilshaw?
Votes aye, motion passes. That will be a recommendation of a denial on this petition. The petitioner will have 10 days in which to appeal this decision writing to City Council. Is that correct, Mr. Tormina?
Correct.
All right. So that's your next course faction. For our residents who came, thank you for coming this evening, and do realize that if the petitioner does choose to appeal this to City Council, you may want to be aware of when that meeting takes place and go to that as well.
Thank you all.
Thank you all. Thank you to the petitioner for coming. That leaves us with one item on our agenda for our minutes, Mr. Secretary.
The approval of the minutes of the 1,187th public hearing and regular meeting held by the Planning Commission on May 17, 2022.
Is there a motion to approve that?
I move that we approve the minutes of the 1,187th meeting.
Okay, and is there support?
Support.
Support by Mrs. McHugh. That's Smiley and McHugh. And all members were present. If there's no objection, I think we can safely show seven to approve those minutes. I don't see any objections, so we'll mark that as approved. That takes us to the end of our meeting tonight. Is there any other business to come before the commission? No other business? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
By Mrs. McHugh. Support by...
Support.
Mr. Bonjero. That's McHugh and Bonjero to adjourn. If, again, if there's no objections, I think we can safely show seven to adjourn this meeting tonight. I do want to thank Livonia Television and Staff for bringing this meeting to our community, and we will have the meeting adjourned at 9:18 PM. Good night, Livonia.